Can you put the recorder on?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, let's rock and roll. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate your patience as we call tonight's meeting to order. This is the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, and it is now 7:05 PM. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. And I would like to read the vision for the City of Oxford is that we will partner with the community to build upon the charm and character of our historic, vibrant, and walkable city to create an extraordinary quality of life for all. And with that, for all those who are so inclined, I would invite you to join us in prayer, led by Reverend Jenny Wilson of Oxford United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Let the favor of the Lord our God be upon us. Oh, prosper the work of our hands, oh God. Yes, prosper the work of our hands. Oh, Lord, with these words of Psalm 90, we begin our work in this new year. We ask, oh God, that indeed your favor and blessing may be upon us. Ground us firmly in a spirit of thankfulness. Thankfulness for our community, for all who worked for good before us, for all who will work for good now, and for all the good that is to come. Guide us to listen and speak with respect and understanding. Grace us with your vision of what our life together can be. And then finally, show us what matters to you and make it matter to us. Prosper the work of our hands, oh God. Oh, prosper the work of our hands. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Wilson. And with that, Commissioner Seth Lumpkin will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we'll consider any adjustments to and approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have anything before us to be added. Are there any comments from any Commissioners about any needed changes? If there are none, then what is the pleasure of the Board?
I move we accept the agenda as listed.
So moved by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda as written? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. The agenda stands adopted. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our Board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the Board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the Board tonight. If any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, no conflicts. And as we had discussed last week, we review our code of ethics every year and sign an attestation to that fact. And so I would ask that if you have done so, that you please pass in your signed attestation, which was passed out last week at the agenda meeting with that packet. And so, do we... Do you have everybody's?
I think so.
Okay. Then, the only thing that I'm going to say for the benefit of the public is that the majority of the focus is on making sure that no Board member derives any profit or benefit from any business that we conduct here in the Board. And the very last item, I think, on this code of ethics is very interesting, which is that we are required to fulfill our statutory obligation to vote on all matters that come before Board member, even when there are appearances of conflict, and only refrain from voting when there is a legal basis for the requirement to be excused from voting. So, a very interesting document and worth reviewing every year. At this time, we turn to our public comment portion of the agenda. And we have Virginia Clay, who has signed up. And Virginia, Ms. Clay, if you'll come forward to the podium, state your address and the purpose which you are here for, and we look forward to hearing you.
Hi, my name is Virginia Clay, and I live at 125 Main Street in Oxford. So I live in the downtown district, if you want to call it that. I have been trying to organize some... a beautification, small beautification project for Martin Luther King Day, which would... which I have... I think I have obtained the proper permissions from parties needed. And we will plant some flower bulbs. Mr. Manning walked with me, and we're going to put some flower bulbs in the Hugh Kern Memorial Park. And a couple of what I call the LeBron, Frank LeBron planters in the Little John Gillum parking lot. Three of those can accept some bulbs, as they're not covered in juniper. And we're going to also go down to the Harrisburg Plumber Cheetah Memorial Cemeteries and place some bulbs at the brick marker at the front of that cemetery. And we're going to install some mesolithic stones from the county in front of those bulbs in order to hold the soil and mulch in their place. My point coming here tonight, I think, is twofold. I think beautification and this kind of thing is a wonderful opportunity for our community to start to deal more explicitly with our important histories that we have. And I would like, secondly, to ask the Board to entertain making some kind of declaration or resolution that would be possibly worded like the following. I've provided a copy to the Secretary, Ms. Bowen, where as Martin Luther King Day is an opportunity to honor and memorialize our history, be it resolved that the Oxford City Commissioners declare each Martin Luther King Holiday an opportunity for volunteerism and beautification of our significant public areas and important historic sites. Anyway, please forgive me if you already addressed this, but I think this is really important to our community. And we can do the same thing at Columbus Day. And this is a small start, but I think with a small start, we can gain some momentum and achieve the beautification that our downtown businesses want. And also gain maybe some proper resolution moving forward with our history in the most positive way possible. And so I hope that you will consider further actions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clay. Excellent points, and I think worthy of discussion among the Board and with the manager and probably also our Facilities Manager and Recreation Department, because, you know, maybe there's a way for us to get more engaged, try to do something annually to support this effort. So is this something that we want to address immediately or have some further conversation and discuss the best way for it?
I think it deserves further conversation, but I will say this. I do know that part of the holiday observance that is coming up in the South African message was community service. And that the ideology in establishing Martin Luther King Jr. Day was for a number of people to create a day of service. And, you know, for those that are teasing to take that to heart and would like to have a day of service or serve on that day, we would certainly be willing to find something for them to do for the system of beautification of the City of Oxford or some other way. So if that resource is out there, if by saying it here tonight is putting that message out there, even if it cannot be accommodated for this year, certainly is planning for next year, getting that message installed and instilled now in the public, we would welcome that.
Absolutely, and accompany it with some kind of resolution to the effect suggested. Ms. Clay, do you... is... do you have a time period so that we can make that public for anybody that would be interested, if available, to come help?
Yes, ma'am. 10:30 Monday morning, 125 Main Street.
Okay.
That's where we'll start. We'll start with the key parts, then go to the parking lot and then to the Harrisburg Plumber Cemeteries. We've already logged out 125 bulbs. We could probably use more bulbs. We can use about 10 bulbs at a time. I could use somebody who knows about twice the size of them, maybe for a little bit less than, and we'll get to that more.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any questions? 10:30. Yes, sir.
I was just going to ask, Ms. Clay, at this point, do you have a number of folks that have agreed to do this on that day?
Well, I have a few. I have one, two, three people that are physically able to help me. But I would be happy to know I'd be happy to have some more help and some more bulbs. You know, I'd be happy for that.
Right.
Excellent.
Ms. Clay, I would say that as your neighbor around the corner on Front Street, I've got a... I've got several hundred bulbs in my basement that we bought for a neighbor that we overbought. I can get with you this weekend. Make sure you have one. I will do all my best to attend on Monday. There's a couple of M.O.K. events I'll be doing that day, but anything we can do to help, I love your idea. So I'll get with you and see what supplies that I personally can donate towards the cause.
Okay, I'll give a thought now.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We thank you for working on this. Okay, with that, we go forward to our... That is the end of our public comment. And we do not have any public hearings on the agenda tonight. So we go forward to delegations, and I would like to invite Reverend John Gooch to come to the podium and speak about... And on behalf of the Human Relations Commission to tell us a little bit more about the work that they do.
Good evening to all of you. It is my pleasure to be here on tonight and greet each one of you on behalf of the Graham County Human Relations Commission. My name is John Gooch. I am the servant as currently as the Chairperson for the Human Relations Commission. I've had the privilege over the years to serve with the Mayor Sargent and currently serve with Commissioner Bullock, as well as Bridget. And I've enjoyed working with them down through the years. My purpose is kind of two or threefold. As you know, during the pandemic, we have not been able to do a lot of things out publicly. But over the year, I've decided that one of the things that we need to do for the human relation is in order to get the name of the human relation out in the community. And one of the ways to do that is to start by coming to each municipality. Personally, I'm making this trip my own self as the Chairperson to appeal to the each commission as we move forward. Here in Graham County, we have been blessed down through the last 24 months or so. We have not had any major issues that we can recall at hand that we had to really deal with. We've had a lot of issues which came before us concerning fair housing and housing issues, especially during the pandemic. We had a number of people to be evicted, and they called and wanted to know what they could do and all this. So we had some of our members on our commission had firsthand experience, and we was able to pass that along. Don't know really how all of that turned out, but they... this is one of the things that we had to deal with. But we have been blessed because we have not had none of the violence and none of the other things that is going on in some of the other cities and other counties. And I said this on our meeting last night. We are back-to-back to some of the counties who have had some major issues, and we have been blessed that we do not have not had those issues. But I do want to make you aware, because we have not had those issues, does not mean that we will not have them. We could be on the verge of a storm, and I just want to make sure that as Commissioners here in this municipality, that you are aware of that and that we are here to work together. We're not here to take the lead, but if need to be, we'll do all that we can, that we might work together, walk together. We live in a time in which people are going separating themselves on various issues because of race, because of color, because of ethnicity, because of where they stay, where they live, how they act, how they look. But I stop this evening to remind all of us here in the City of Oxford that we are all of one person. We are one people. God created us all. I ain't going to preach tonight, on the other hand. I am a pastor, so I won't get into that tonight. But if I do get started, there's one person would help me out. I know that is. And so I want to remind you of that, first of all. The next thing is, I want to say to you that many of you has been serving here in the Graham County area for down through the years know that the human relation... And we had a large gathering here a few years ago for candidates forum. The human relation have taken their hands completely off of that. So we will not be doing anything for us locally or statewide or any candidates forum and all. We are not in that anymore. We have taken our hands off of that. We are planning if... when things are lifted, statewide workshop with... for human relation. It might be on fair housing. We just had one by Zoom recently on the fair housing, and each person that participated was awarded a certificate. And so we received those certificates within the last week or so by the State Human Relation Commissioner Chair, Jean Troy. And we have reached out to him for the 2022 year and asked him to come for an in-person statewide meeting that would be held in Graham County, hosted by Graham County. And if this happened, I would ask that the City of Oxford would step up, put your tag in to help out with the greeting and whatever needs to be done during this time. I will be in touch with you if this happens. But we are planning this. We are looking forward to it. We might have to change our schedule in order that if we make it happen. But it is a need, and it is a need in our community as well as statewide. The other issue is, since I'm here tonight, the MLK breakfast. It will not... we will not have the MLK breakfast in person, but it will be virtual again on this year, Monday morning, beginning at 7 o'clock. It will be on Channel 17, I think. It's Spectrum 17, I think that's what that is. And it will be on the county website, I mean county Facebook at 7 o'clock. So please join us and chime in with that. I will say that one of the things about the MLK that has just taken flight over the last few years is the number of participation that we have in the MLK essay contest. Had almost 100 participants throughout the county from our school system this year. So that has taken off, and so we are super excited about that. And that's why we are... we reach... we are here. Want to let you know that we are here, and we ask for your continued support. We ask, again, down through the years, the City of Oxford have financially supported the Graham County Human Relations Commission. So we do still ask for your financial support whenever you can, whatever you can do. That you might say, we are not doing anything. Well, we are doing some things. We got some things planned for some of the students and high... in our school system. If the pandemic allows, we was able to do something small last year, but we are continuing to still work to do all that we can. We are here if you need us, and I want to thank you for your time and for allowing me just to come. Now, lastly, my... I don't know what my schedule will be, but my intention is because this issue of showing up in person and addressing the municipalities is... will be an ongoing thing. And I will hopefully we're putting it... going to try to put in something where we will invite one of the Mayors every other month to come and share a few words with us. And so we want... we need you to be just as much transparent to us as we are to you, to show our community that we are one, working together, that we might make this a better place to live.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Before you sit down, let me make sure, colleagues, does anybody have any questions for Reverend Gooch?
No, I just want to thank him very much for all that he does, and it's appreciated. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We appreciate your coming out tonight. Absolutely want to continue to work with you. At this time, then, we go to Item B under delegations, which is to receive Carleen Evans with Winston William Creach Evans and Company for the 2021 audit presentation. Ms. Evans, we thank you for coming out on this cold night.
Thank you. Thank you. As you said, I'm representing Winston Williams Creach and Evans here in Oxford with the city's auditors for this past year. I know some of you have seen this, so my presentation is just a summary slideshow of the audit report. This is a full audit report, which is very long. But I'll start by saying the city did receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the June 30th, 2020 year. And we have submitted the report for the June 30th, 2021 report to the GFOA for grading. And last year was the 18th year in a row that the city was awarded that award. And for 2021, the city was a single audit, which meant we had over $750,000 in federal expenditures. That puts us at the highest level of audit service. And we actually had over $5 million in federal expenditures, so we were well over the threshold for single audit. And for the 2021 year, we had no findings to report, and that was for either the financial statements or the schedule of expenditures. And I'll start with the government-wide statements. This is a summary of the statement of net position. We had total assets and deferred outflows at the end of the year of $75,909,000. We had total liabilities and deferred inflows at the end of the year of $33,624,000, which left us net position of $42,285,000. And with the total assets and outflows, they increased $8,762,000 over last year, and pretty much primarily all of that was CIP and the increase in the capital assets. And for the total liabilities and deferred inflows, they increased a little over $3 million from last year, and that was due to three factors. The pension liability was up $447,000. The OPEB liability was up $1.5 million, and we had new debt of $2.1 million in that figure. And the next exhibit, we're still in the government-wide statements, is the statement of activities. And for the year, we had total revenues of $21,239,000. We had total expenditures of $15,558,000, which gave us an increase in net position of $5,680,000. And this was $2.49 million better than the prior year. And then we'll break down some of the revenues and expenditures. These are in the fund statements, so this is in the general fund. These are the revenues by type. Adverloric taxes made up 33%, and that total figure was $3,744,000. We had other taxes which comprised 22% that totaled $2,427,000. Unrestricted revenues were... a 6% total were $669,000. Restricted revenues made up 4% for a total of $483,000. We had permits and fees of $56,194,000. Sales and services were 21% of the revenues at $2.353 million. We had investment earnings of $2,463,000. Some of these are smaller than a 1% percentage. That's why I'm not showing you up. Misselanes revenues of $4,090,000. We had transfers in that represented 2%, which were $225,000. We had sales some assets that made up $18,000 of revenue. And then we had proceeds for the loan that was 11% of revenues at $1.25 million, which gave us total general fund revenues for the year of $1,11,000, excuse me, $235,000. And overall, the total revenue over the prior year was up $1.6 million, which is mainly made up of that loan, $1.2 million. So then, we compare the revenues budget to actual. The original budget was $10,49,000. The final budget was $10,283,000. And actual revenues came in at $11,235,000, which were $952,000 higher than the budget. Then moving to the expenditures for the general fund. By function, general government made up 14%, which was $1,407,000. Public safety was 42% of expenditures, which was $4,239,000. Transportation was 25% for $2.53 million. Environmental protection was 11% at $1,094,000. Culture and rec expenditures were 7%, and they totaled $682,000. Then we had transfers out at $16,207,000, and we had debt principal payments, which made up 1% that totaled $70,942,000. So our total general fund expenditures for the year were $10,49,000, which was up $484,000 over the prior year. And if we compare those actual to budget, the original budget for expenditures were $10,516,000. The final budget was $10,750,000. And then actual expenditures came in at $10,49,000, which was $700,648 under budget. Then on the general fund for fund balance, the breakdown of that, we had non-spendable general fund fund balance of $3,404,000. We had restricted fund balance, which made up 14% of $1,050,000. Committed fund balance was 1%, and that total was $70,342,000. We had assigned fund balance making up 3% at $230,955,000. And then the largest portion, 82%, was unassigned, which was $6,292,000, giving us total general fund balance of $7,646,000.
Ms. Evans, I'm going to ask... I don't think I can listen as quickly as you can speak. So if you can just take it down a notch, that would be really helpful for me.
I tend to do that, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. When we look at the fund balance that was available for appropriation, that total was $6,815,000. And then the general fund expenditures were $10,49,000. So when you look at fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, the number this year is 67.82%. Last year, that number was 59.87%, so it's up a little in a positive manner. That's the one the LGC requires, 8%. They prefer you to have over 20%. And when I looked at cities roughly the size, population-wise, that had water and sewer fund, but not electric funds, the average was around 77%. So it's a pretty good one. Then moving on from the general fund to the proprietary revenues. This is water, sewer, and stormwater. We had charges for services of $6,107,000. We had other operating revenue of $1,089,000. And we had investment earnings of $22,493,000, giving us total proprietary revenues of $7,219,000. And these revenues were down $90,000 from last year. Then on the flip side, the expenditures by category for the proprietary funds. General operations made up 19%, and they totaled $920,000. Meter service totaled 2% at $109,000. We had water supply expenses, 19%, and they were $900,000. Line maintenance was 14% at $641,000. Lift station expense was 3% at $122,000. Stove oil water line was $11,900,000. The industrial waste treatment was 16% and totaled $774,000. And the depreciation totaled 24% and was $1,141,000. And then finally, the interest expense was $370,000, giving us total proprietary expenditures of $4,993,000. Then looking at the fund balance for the two different types of funds. For the governmental funds, the ending fund balance was $7,710,000, which was up $1,192,000 from last year. And then on the proprietary funds, the ending fund balance was $37,756,000, which was up $6,222,000 over last year. And then this chart just shows the ending cash at the end of the year for the last five years. And you see at the end of this year, it was $18,734,000. So it was down $323,000 from the prior year. And you see at the end of this year, it was $18,734,000. So it was down 323,000 from the prior year. And on the opposite side of that, this is about a slide that shows the debt balances at the end of the year. Most of these were on the slides last year. We had payments down those. There's two new ones. The second one that says street resurfacing was a new loan this year. That's the 1.2 million I was mentioning a moment ago. And then the next to the bottom one that says 2017 sewer main replacements. We had that last year, but we drew down another 852,000 on that from the DEQ. So, all those are the ending balances at June 30th, and the total debt ended up totaling $19,263,000. And that was up from the prior year, 978,000.
I have a question about that chart.
Okay.
I noticed there are two categories of wastewater treatment plant.
It's just...
And I'm curious as to why not one category, or is it, is there a reason to have two?
Yeah, they're just shown differently because they were projects started at different times and drawn down. And Dean on their confirmations lists those separately, so we like to list the loans out separately, so they can see it to match their confirmations to us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And then... This one shows the tax levy and collections for the current year. You see on this past year, the total collections for 2021 were $3,698,000. And that gave us a tax collection percentage of 97.98%. And that's the total collection vehicles, real estate, and everything altogether. So it's down slightly, about a quarter of 1%. And I looked again, it's cities about the same size as Oxford, and the average was 98%, so it's pretty close in line to those. And then I'd like to say special thanks to Hock and everybody in the finance department for working with us this year. It's the second year we had to do all the audit remote, which kind of presents a challenge especially for them. But I would like to say thanks a lot, and then I'll leave it. See if anybody has any other questions for me.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Ms. Evans?
Just one question. Do you see any reason for the tax levy and collection being slightly down? Is it anything to do with maybe that people weren't working, weren't leaving?
It could very well be in vehicles, you know, affected some. They put in the tax and tag together several years ago. That made it jump up. And so that could have something to do with it coming through a little bit, too.
I was curious on your pie charts with respect to the revenues. Is it pretty consistent, the allocation, the percentage allocation across the categories from one year to the next? Do you notice?
They are. It's just years that we have a loan coming in, that will, you know, skew it one way. Like last year, we didn't have one, and so this year, that proceeds from the loan will be up that we didn't have last year. But other than that, most of the other categories stay fairly consistent.
Okay. And, and also similarly for expenditures?
Mm-hmm. Like I said, one, one time there may be something like, this year we had a lot more street resurfacing, so that may have made that department go up a little bit this year. But other than that, they're kind of consistent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything from anybody else? Okay. Well, with that, we thank you very much for your time tonight, and appreciate your hard work. And yes, we also do give a big shout out to the manager and Mr. Ung for, and his department for all their work to make sure that we're doing the job that we need to be doing with the people's money.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you very much, Mr. Ung. And with that, we'll move forward to item five, which is city business. And we have one item number, or letter A, which is to consider approving a lease agreement with the state of North Carolina of public safety for their installed equipment on the Wall Street Water Tower. The North Carolina Highway Patrol has updated its communication equipment at the Wall Street Water Tower and released the city of Oxford from its current maintenance responsibilities. This Viper voice interoperability plan for emergency responders tower site is used by the Oxford Fire Department. And Oxford Police Department is the primary communications to provide citywide coverage and in-building 800 megahertz penetration. As part of this transition, the state of North Carolina requires a lease update outlining less C and less SOR responsibilities, terms, and termination conditions. This is a standard document used at all sites not owned by the state of North Carolina and requires board approval. You have support information in this agreement in attachment 5A. Staff recommends approving the lease agreement. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, we have a concomitant motion between Commissioners Tovey and Bullock. Is there any discussion? And I then have a question for the manager, which is the reference to building a building on, on that. So is this a new building, or is this referring to the building that is already there?
Chief, refresh my memory. I think they refurbished the little maintenance facilities there.
It was actually replaced. So the existing building was going on 50 years old, and we owned it, and we were responsible for the condition of it, was maintaining it. And with the building being replaced, the newer modular structure, the high control, public safety has taken over all responsibilities for its maintenance as well as the associated generator, which we were having to maintain and work on and actually take from you. They've taken over all of that. That is about $150,000.
So it's, it's, it's a new building within that fenced area? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. That's my question. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. When they say they have updated the communications equipment, can anybody tell me what does that mean? Does that mean that it's better now, and what can it do now that it couldn't do before?
You speak in relevant terms. You have TV on. After a while, you need a new TV. So that's what happened here. So after September 11th, 2001, it was recognized that we had a deficiency in our communications across the whole country on the radio service. So there was a lot of work done, and appropriations that had been done in North Carolina, and public high control decided that technology had been decided that we needed a new register. So by 2005, the design of the Viper system, which you just wanted to find, that equipment has been in place since that date. So now they updated the new equipment to replace the old equipment, as well as changed the antenna wire, the coax, and the antennas on top of the tower. So everything in the building, everything on the tower is brand new.
All right.
Thank you. Excellent question. Anything else? Okay, with that, we have a motion, and no further discussion. All in favor of the motion signal show by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. We move forward to item six, which is to hear some updates on the finance report by Hock Ung, our finance director. And you should have his latest finance report with in your pocket.
Well, good evening again. I hope you guys are doing well, and thank you to the citizens who are here. And I wanted to give you the overview. As you heard, Carleen Evans present the fiscal year 2021. In front of you, you have this newly bound audit book. And this is the presentation that she's just presented. In the very back, shows some graphs and charts that you have just experienced and witnessed. This has been submitted to the GFOA for another award. So hopefully, it comes back with a clean, and I don't see that there's any reason why we should not get another award for this particular work. With that in mind, I wanted to just dive into this one sheet of the December's report. In front of you, you have this. And basically, before today, to the new commissioners, welcome. Typically, this is being submitted, and you all would approve. And tonight, I think Madam Mayor just wanted me to stand here and explain to you, and just kind of explain each categories and what have you. So if you have questions beyond, if you thought about any more when you leave here, please contact me or the manager. We have detail to the, the numbers that we're sharing with you today, tonight. The end of December, after all the bills are paid and the bank reconciliations are done, this is where we are at. So when you look at this, this is the receipt at December 31. December is the six-month end, so the target percentage is 50%, and that is the number that we're striving for. And if you're looking at the left-side column, the general fund, the first top section is the revenues. And if you look at the percentage of revenue, keep in mind that the target is 50%. We're at 69.1%. So all in all, we're on target, above target for revenue. And then coming down to the expenditure, we are at 47.7%. And I can go down each one of them for you. The governing board, the governing body, is at 73%. Do you want me to try to explain, Madam Mayor, the, the reason why it is above 50?
For that particular one, because it's so much higher, I'd say hit the, hit the extremities, but certainly let them know that one, please.
Okay, there's three, there's three figures that drove that number up, above 50%. So the property liability and risk is a prepayment, so that was paid. The league of municipalities dues, that was paid. And also Airport Authority, that's their contribution, that, that was paid. So those three amounts was at 100% at, at the very beginning, so it drove that percentage up to 73%. The administration is at 55%. And coming down, HR is at 54%. DOE DC is at 18%, and the reason so is that the director has not been replaced. Finance is at 56%. Auditors, they almost completed their work. As of tonight, they are. So it's at 94%. The non-mislandes department, the transfer debt service is at 35%. Legal is at 65%. Central garage is at 50, at 49%. Public buildings and grounds, 41%. Public works facilities, 50%. Landscapes and beautification is at 51%. Police department, 49%. Fire department is at 51%. Streets and leaf collections, 42%. Engineering, it's at 41%. Sanitation collections, 44%. Cemetery is at 41%. Landing and zoning, 50%. Recreation at 47%. Swimming pool, 41%. Lake Devon is at 25%. Oxford Athletic Park is at 40%. And that total accumulate, accumulation of 47.7%. So not all departments expenditure has been expended. So therefore, when you take the revenue minus the expenditure, we have in the plus $2,623,360,000.
Can you tell us why Lake Devon is so low, please?
It's seasonal.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving to the right-side column, that's the water and sewer fund. The first part is the revenues. And we're at 53% for the revenue. And then the expenditure, we're at 42.2%. And I'll go down to the categories. The Department of Water Collections, we're at 54%. The non-mislandes department transfer and debt payment is at 51%. Meter service is at 52%. Lift station is at 23%. Stoveall is at 102%. There's a, if you see the budget, it's only $11,210,000. I mean, I'm sorry, $11,025,000. And the expen, the actual so far as end of December is $11,210,000. And when I went and dig into, drill into that, there are three incidents that caused the numbers to go up, and those are the repairs to the pump. So with a small budget, and the, the pump needing repairs drove the, the expenditure. So we're gonna have to make a budget amendment before the year end to make it, make it even out.
Can, can you explain to us why the lift station above that is only at 23%?
The electricity, the, the, sometimes it's, it's not fully utilized.
Okay.
We also budget for repairs, and fortunately, we kind of have that many thus far, and we hope we do not. If I could add something real, real quickly, while you've got six months of data there, and the target is 50%. Typically, a greater point of reference for a target of 50% after six months is revenue and not expenditure.
Sure.
Excuse me, it's the opposite. Revenue, as you can see, you understand, adverlor tax collection, such as what we're getting in from the county, the, the date of taxes due is December. So basically, at the end of December, people typically have a tendency to pay their taxes, because they're gonna have to pay you a fee after that. So we get a large crush in during that six months, or the first six months, and therefore, the number's at 87%. And similar for sales tax or franchise taxes and utility use taxes, which are generated from the state. The three latter ones are quarterly, and sometimes depending upon when you get this report, that quarter has not come in. So it's more relevant to look at it in terms of the target as expenditures. Everything but what you see in the green box is going to basically be written, rewritten every year. The green box carries over from year to year. That's a snapshot of what we have in our accounts. So again, I have five years of these numbers, and if you'd like to see five years of these, we'd be glad to share them. But they show some significant growth and improvement. And I do want to say thanks to Mr. Ung and his team downstairs for their assistance in getting us in the strength of financial position that we are in. And also, second, his statement that if you have questions about that financial statement, the one page, or the document that is printed out that gives line item by line item information, or the sleep-inducing green document that you just received, please contact us, and certainly delve into any, any questions you have.
Excellent. Any colleagues, any, yes, sir, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, because of the fact that, you know, because of the pandemic and things that have happened, there have been funds provided by, you know, federal government to supplement issues that might be happening in different municipalities. I was wondering, does our, does, does this document reflect any monies we've received from, from that, those sources?
Yes.
Okay, where's that?
Yeah, if you look at that, the bottom part where it says cash and investments. At the very, yeah, the, the green box. On the very, very bottom part, it says the BBNT American Relief Fund. So we, if you look on the, the, the left-hand side as well, the American Rescue Fund... So if you look on the left-hand side as well, the American Rescue Fund is at one million, four hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars. Not a penny spent so far of that. So what it is, is that there is, there's upcoming board retreat and meetings with the board to discuss the usage of this funding. The other funding that you may have question about is the grant that we received, the coronavirus grant. And that is what, that is basically what we spend, we would apply for reimbursements. And that fund is not listed in here at all because it is on a reimbursement. We don't get that fund prior to us spending it. That's a grant on a reimbursement system. And there is Ms. Hart and her department handles the, and channel all the application to a third party. And they do all the sifting through and who qualifies for that. And we're just a in-between.
Conduit.
To, yes, yes. We channel all this and we make sure that we fulfill the mandate that prescribed the reimbursement process. But as far as the money's concerned, there's not on this paper.
Right.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Ms. Strong?
I've just got one more question about Stovall, it's a hundred and two percent. Do you anticipate more expenditure in the next six months? And then will we need a budget amendment to cover that?
We'll need a budget amendment once we go over the one-hundred percent threshold. Either that or we'll have to shift money from somewhere and report that to you, what we have done. There will be some additional minor expenses because I believe we've got some operating expenses associated with that that are in, you can see in that document right there. Hopefully, we won't have any more major fixes there. Hopefully, this has done the work that we have done. And then we'll continue on into the rest of this fiscal year, the remainder of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to follow up with what Commissioner Bridges had mentioned just a second ago about the American Rescue Fund and the monies there. That was the concern that I had at the last board meeting about how are we spending this money? What are we going to be doing with it? And that's why, as the chairman of the Finance Committee, I was wanting our committee to get together so that we could have a better understanding of the sources of this money, what the rules are for the expenditure of those monies, and to just make sure that we're on board as a commission, as a board, on how we want to utilize these funds. Or how could it impact our community in the best way, in a very thoughtful, well-planned-out plan versus hurry up and spend the money? We don't want that. We want it to have a major impact on our whole community. So that was one of the things that I was hoping to accomplish by the Budget and Finance Committee, having a deeper and better understanding of all of this money that has come down the pipeline. Because we may never get a blessing like this ever again.
Absolutely, so.
Just to follow up on that.
Yes, sir.
I don't want us to have to return any money.
Right.
We may be returning any of that money. As a matter of fact, we've gotten half of it. We're giving another allocation in this upcoming fiscal year. I hope that all the representatives received some information that I provided to you on Friday. Basically, conveyed that the federal government had just issued the final rule for utilization of these funds. The abbreviated section of that, I think it was from some pages, and the final rule was four hundred and sixty-seven pages, I believe, of information. So there's a lot there. But basically, what I have gleaned from the final rule is that there is an easing of restrictions as far as what the money can be extended for. And that's what we have been waiting to hear. As a matter of fact, I'll participate in yet another Zoom call with Karen Malonzi at the School of Government about the funding Thursday morning. There's been a series of those coming from the School of Government. So we're learning as well as this final rule is rolled out and what we can do and match that with potential opportunities for the utilization of that funding. As Mr. Ung explained, you've got the one point four million there plus that is shown on that sheet. We've not expended any of it yet. So the plan for that is yet to be determined. We will be having those conversations as to how to best make the utilization of that impactful for Oxford, which is what we hope and all wish it to be.
Excellent. So we have, you know, as Chair of the Finance Committee, you can certainly work with your committee members to determine a date in common that works for you all and then work with Cindy to send that out to the public and the rest of the board. Ms. Strong also made the comment that this could be a very good topic for the retreat. And so my question to the board and the manager is, and to you, of course, Commissioner Gilreath, is, do you want to have a meeting with your committee be sooner than that? Or is this something that we might want to have as a substantive topic during the retreat for all of the board?
My thought was that we have it before the retreat so that when we get to the retreat, we're more, with a more targeted conversation.
Okay. So then, then what I would suggest is that you work with your committee members to come up with the date that works, suits you, as well as the manager and Mr. Ung, because they would be the people that would also be, and then the rest of us fit in as we are able to.
Madam Mayor, just one minute, real quick. Mr. Manager, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but on our field trip to Cary a couple of weeks ago for our musical training class, I made a note specifically that as of right now, the only guidance that has been, the only clear guidance that has been given thus far in regards to this one point four million in funding this year and for the ones that are coming next year is primarily water-based projects as well as green, you know, green infrastructure-style projects. Is that, am I remembering that correctly from my notes? Because I was going to share that with Commissioner Gilry, but that, I also make sure that my recollection of what we heard was clear.
That's the most unencumbered item until the rendering of the final rule came out. For infrastructure, I know that a number of cities and counties are having those conversations about investing in their communities. And a number of them are primarily targeting infrastructure and utilizing a significant portion of those funds for that purpose. Because at the time, until the final rule was given, that was really the most targeted, unencumbered way of going about utilizing these funds and making an impact without just tons and tons and tons of recording requirements necessary to be provided to the federal government. Now that the final rule has come out, I'm sure there'll be some different thought processes about that, regarding that. But that will involve the city and all the municipalities in the state of North Carolina, and all the one-hundred counties and all of the fifty states have until fiscal year twenty-six, basically, December thirty, twenty twenty-six, to extend these funds. So you have some time to basically figure out what the best plan for them will be to make the most significant impact. I think that that was, as I recall, Commissioner Khan, one of the comments that was made by the presenters is that they encourage those that were in attendance to not rush, to take your time to be considerate. Because just like what you just mentioned, Commissioner Bridges, was that, you know, we want to be impactful. And we want to make a good plan and want to do what's best and what's right. And this will probably be the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to receive that type of funding from the federal government.
So perhaps, Commissioner Gilry, if I can make a suggestion, maybe have a conversation with the manager first. Because in order for the meeting to yield the fruit that I think you're looking for, we need to make sure that our folks have a thorough understanding of the latest guidance. And so there probably isn't any point in scheduling a meeting until you have worked that out with him. So is that a reasonable step before you determine the date?
What did you just say again?
Have a conversation with Mr. Thornton about the timing. Because in order for that meeting to yield the best fruit, we need to make sure that Mr. Ung and Mr. Thornton have a handle on the latest guidance. So maybe touch base with him first and then go forth with your.
Well, Hawk and I, we've talked about it some, but anyway, so yes, no problem.
That would be great. Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Ung? Okay, bless you. Thank you so much. We appreciate your good work and that of all of our departments and our manager for keeping us in such a solid financial position.
May I ask one more thing?
Yes, sir.
The information that was provided about the audit this evening is really, it's a result of an entire unit of work, of diligent, tireless effort on the part of a number of people here from the city of Oxford. And we have talked quite a bit about the city finances under the belt of the Finance Director. Finance, but the audit report itself is roughly, took ten minutes. She referenced one thing that I want to put a little bit of emphasis on, that she was talking about fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and comparing it to municipalities of our size and what they generally have. I like to not necessarily compare us to municipalities of our size, but compare us to ourselves. And when I compare us to ourselves and look at fund balances as a percentage of expenditures, just in the last five years, in two thousand and seventeen, that fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was at thirty-two percent. It has now more than doubled in five years to sixty-eight point whatever percent or whatever that was, nearly sixty-eight percent. I think that shows not only that Oxford is doing quite well financially, but that Oxford is being managed well financially. And that, what that means to me, if I look at my personal accounts, and my personal accounts have grown that much, it gives me the opportunity and options of doing different things. Money is a tool. And having the city of Oxford in that financial position with what the city sits on the precipice of, I think, positions the city well for its future. So I just wanted to add that. And with another thank you to Mr. Ung for his aid and assistance.
Well, I would certainly heartily agree with that. And I think at this point, the only member of the board is Commissioner Bullock, who came on in two thousand and nine with me. But certainly, Commissioner Bridges was on the board before then. And if I'm recalling correctly, the fund balance when we were first elected was eleven percent. So we have come a mighty long way and we certainly appreciate the role that you have played. Because you're right, it makes evaluating all the opportunities in front of us different. And I can say certainly from my perspective, I take, I have total trust when the prospect of spending money is put before the board on various projects because I know we're in good hands. And we've been led well and the staff is working well under your guidance. And I think it's a great thing and I want to thank you very much. And Mr. Ung and his staff, but also all of the departments, who work very hard to do the good work of the city with a different eye on finances and avoiding, I guess, unnecessary expenditures, which puts us in the position of maybe doing some greater things going forward. So thank you for bringing that up. Does anybody else have anything they want to say?
Just agree with everything you've just said. I think it's good.
All right, okay. Hip, hip, hurrah. Thank you. So with that, we move forward to the consent agenda, which is to accept the December finance report by our Finance Director and approve the December agenda and regular meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Signal so by saying aye. Any opposed like sign? That motion carries. And before we adjourn to closed session, we'll go through the reminders quickly and then take a moment for everybody to make remarks. So key is that we no longer need to worry about getting in RSVPs for the chamber dinner by tomorrow because the chamber dinner has been canceled and moved, excuse me?
Postponed.
Postponed, right. Canceled, postponed, moved towards the spring. So we'll hear more about that, God willing, when we can gather in large groups again. City of Oxford will be closed for Martin Luther King Day on the seventeenth. And anybody who wishes to join Virginia Clay and her compadres at ten-thirty, I think, down in front of this and that, please do so. That's a wonderful effort coming from the community and led by her. And as was mentioned by Reverend Gooch and sent out earlier last week, also the Martin Luther King Ceremony, sponsored by the Human Relations Commission, is videoed. And they did a great job last year. So I really encourage folks to tune in because they really did a very effective job and I'm sure will do so again. I would also ask, Mayor Pro Tem, do you happen to know about, is First Baptist Church doing anything?
Not to my knowledge. I have not heard any activities.
Okay, so then the.
Coming from the Municipal Alliance, I haven't.
They haven't planned anything. There is something, as far as we know, at Northern Gravel Middle School on the seventeenth, which, at four P.M., at Northern Gravel Middle School, and that's still on. So if you're interested in coming, please do. And with that, Commissioner Khan, anything that you would like to add?
Just briefly, thank you to all the departments and your staff for everything you do, particularly everyone who's been working outside lately, particularly last Monday. Because I sure as heck wasn't about to go outside in that mess. So anybody who did, thank you for your service. You know, we appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gilreath?
I want to just personally thank Hawk and Allen for, you know, working with the Budget Committee and keeping us on track and how it has been so enlightening to be just part of that whole process. And so I am just tickled pink that our numbers look the way that they are. And so you guys do an outstanding job.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Commissioner Toby?
Well, I reiterate what Commissioner Gilby said, though I'm not pink, actually. Nothing else? I'd like to, yeah, I am, yeah. I'd like to ask the manager, I mean, I'll keep on about it. I just, I get concerned about our police chief. How's the process going?
Process is going well. We are actually at the point where we are in the process of inviting candidates to come in for a bit of an assessment center.
So, we have basically narrowed down the pool of applicants to those that we believe are the most qualified and are preparing to go through that process. And we'll see what we get from that.
Thank you.
We are definitely moving forward now.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Commissioner Bridges?
When you say you've narrowed it down to a certain number of folks, do you have a number for the police chief?
As far as-
Yeah, the number of-
The field, as of now, is four.
Four, okay.
That's pretty narrow.
That's pretty narrow. I was wondering about an update on the, um, and I'm not sure if this is something we should discuss now or in closed session, but I am interested in the thing we talked about in terms of additional property or land.
I think, I think that's coming.
Oh, okay, okay.
There you go.
All right. And, and the only other thing I want to add is, and, and, and I think that part of it is, because we, you know, we're talking about all these good financial reports and great shape that the city is in. I was curious as to the last time, um, board members, uh, had an increase in, in our services.
Uh, we just, didn't we just get it with the four percent? I think we did.
No.
I don't believe so.
I mean, I'm just curious about it.
Yes, but, um, we can certainly include that conversation in the upcoming budget preparation process. I'll leave it to you guys to lead me in that conversation and discussion as to where it needs to go.
I think that's a toughie. I think it's a toughie, because, because I don't think it's-
It shouldn't be a toughie.
Well-
Because we work hard.
But we work for the people.
And, and y'all been bragging, you know, about how, how, how well you doing.
That's the way you can life a difficult decision, because there are different people.
Right. I think, uh, it's the people's money, so I think it's hard. It's a, it's a, it's a conundrum to vote on a raise for yourself when you're spending somebody else's money. But, so- So-
Well, we make decisions on a lot of other folks.
Yeah, we do.
Right. That's on behalf of the people.
Well, we represent the people.
So, we can continue to have that discussion during the budget season. Excellent. Thank you. Is there anything else, sir?
No. As you see, I'm not scared.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I don't know. I was looking around to see, and I think maybe Mr. McCord and Ms. Harden and a few others may remember, David Parker is a longtime employee of the City of Oxford. I ask you to please keep his family in your prayers as he was funeralized today. So, keep him, David was well-known around the City of Oxford. Secondly, um, speaking on, on, uh, in reference to the, um, interviews for the Chief of Police, we have any, any, I think the la, uh, one year when Chief Colley was employed, but I remember hearing the board talk about there was a type of interview or something where the public was involved in it. Who remembers? Am I hallucinating?
No.
No, I don't think so.
You don't?
No, there was, um, I, I don't know how many folks were involved, but I think, I think there are a couple of things that, um, issues. The, the key people were law enforcement professionals from other jurisdictions, which, uh, and certainly the city manager can add to this. He has developed a team. And I, I think the important thing is that every manager does it the way that they want to do it. And, uh, so, I can let Mr. Thornton speak further to that if, if he would like to, but I, I, I think that's key piece-
I think it would be appropriate if, um, if you want some additional information in regards to it, please give me a call.
Okay, okay.
We'll call about it. But, um, we are preparing or putting together an assessment panel of professional peers. That is a diverse group intentionally and believe that it will well serve the purpose for which it is intended. So, want to go a little bit more, just give me a call.
Okay, because the justification is from the public, you know, because I think several people were, may have been on the panel or heard of the panel or had some form of input with the panel and just questioning to see if that was the route you were going to take. So, I will get with you further on that. That's all.
Excellent.
I would, as, well, I don't hesitate really. Why there are no members of, no commissioners on that panel? Don't you think that at least one or two commissioners should be on that panel?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't.
Well, I'm just asking.
Because we-
Go ahead. I, I would con, uh, ask you to take a look at your charter, number one.
All right.
And understand personnel. And I fully understand that, um, the political, political perspective and you comes into play a little bit more for that specific position than it does for others. But, um, your charter doesn't delineate the, the difference between the hiring of a public works director or a chief of police and who is to do that.
Okay.
You've also, a few months ago, um, forthrightly come out and conveyed that you have every faith and confidence in the manager in making a good decision in regards to do that. And I intend to do that.
Right.
So, um, you know, I believe that the, um, the people that, uh, really should be making that decision or making a recommendation in regards to that decision are people who, who do that job every day. I think that that's the most valuable, um, information and recommendation that you can receive. I dare say that, um, it would not be appropriate for me to walk into Commissioner Lumpkin's office and tell him how to practice law. And-
Just a question. That's open. It was just a question, just an inquiry.
All questions are great questions.
All questions are great.
Mr. Thornton, well, with that, with that said, do you, do you know if, uh, do you have a horizon? Uh, or a timeline, not, not to put you on the spot by a timeline, but a horizon of when you would like this off your plate?
Sooner the better, for obvious reasons. But, um, it is a process that will take a bit of a natural course. Once you go through the process of the assessment center, you can never predict what type will unveil as far as the candidate that, um, comes forward out of that process and, um, how that candidate, uh, as far as further conversations, negotiations, et cetera, et cetera, all play out. But, um, it is my intention to move it along just as quickly as we can possibly move it forward.
Thank you.
I have, I have, I'd like to say something.
No, no, no. It's okay.
But I can't just sit here and, and, and feel like if I think that opinions from our community about who our next police chief ought to be, um, means that I question the manageability or, or, or his, you know, his, uh, decision on what this committee should look like. Because I don't necessarily think that a person has to do the work, do the job to make a decision about who our police chief might be. I think that there are individuals in our community, because, you know, they talk about community policing. And a lot of times, people in our community who have lived here for many years, who, uh, do other kinds of work and make suggestions and, and express desires about what our police chief ought to, uh, be about. So, I, I'm concerned that it would only be law enforcement folk or people who have those kinds of experience to only, to be the only ones with a voice about who our next police chief ought to be. Because Chief Colley was selected, um, with a committee of, uh, uh, I s- I assume, police individuals, but also community people. And I think he did a good job as our police chief. So, that's just my feeling about it. I have no clue who's on this committee, and I don't think that they all have to be law enforcement folk.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on down the line. Commissioner Bullock?
Yes, Mayor. Um, recently, I just happened to catch a news broadcast that were talking about the bad weather we'd had, especially in the lower parts of the state. But what caught my attention was when they started talking about the effects of it and the monies that Cindy's were spending on flooded roads, cars being stranded, accidents and all. It was amazing when, one of the things they mentioned as a prime cause was because streets were not clean and the drainage areas were clogged with leaves and twigs and all kind of yard waste. And it just made me think and appreciate the situation we have. And I mentioned to Steve, um, we, we don't have that. And I just want to publicly acknowledge to Steve and Amy the work done by the employees of Public Works and the Street Department to not only keep Oxford green and clean, as our motto says, but showed very clearly how it helped to avoid accidents and spending money that we don't need to spend. They do a good job. They don't get the recognition, so I want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Lumpkins?
Um, I don't really have anything. Um, I do want to say thanks to everybody that took the time to put all this information together. I get kind of scared when I see a lot of numbers on a page. I don't know if that's just me. But to have it organized in the way it is is very helpful. So, I, I really appreciate everybody's hard work.
Excellent. Thank you. And, um, I don't think I have anything to say. I'm going to go down. Don't worry. I don't have anything to say other than Happy New Year. May God's graces shine upon everyone. Please get boosted if you are not boosted. I think we are all so tired-
All boosted.
-of the constraints on our movements and our gathering and so many things. And everything I read says, get vaccinated, get boosted. So, I just hope everybody will, so that sooner rather than later, we can be, uh, jumping around and gathering together as we like to do in our wonderful town. And with that, Mr. Thornton, anything that you would like to add?
Well, I'll certainly second that. You know, I, I think if you send the numbers today, it's at the highest that it's ever been, period. For vaccination, infection rates, everything else. So, you know, if all it takes is a prick in the arm or two to, to lower that and protect others, then I think it's something that we owe each other as a society. I also think that we would be remiss here tonight if we did not mention the James Webb Telescope and what has been going on in that realm. That realm being way out there. And, you know, as, as I'm sure most people in the room know, that was a ten billion dollar endeavor to basically replace the Hubble Telescope with the James Webb Telescope that, uh, just this past week unfurled its gold sail out into outer space and is out there doing its job, seeing great new worlds and to go where none has gone before. And he was from Granville County and grew up in Oxford. So, we should be incredibly proud of the native son and justifiably so. So, that is, um, you know, international news related to Oxford.
It is.
I thought we would be remiss if we did not mention that tonight and just how proud we are of that fact. Couple of other little items, um, including the retreat. It looks like we are pretty much zeroing in on February the eighteenth and nineteenth. The environment conduct on the streets at this time, doing large part to, uh, there being a facilitator this year. And facilitator is available, uh, on those decks. So, those are the things that we're kind of zeroing in on at this very moment. So, I've not heard back from everybody that they said they probably update in regards to the retreat. But, uh, that's kind of what's going on at the moment. Also, um, there had been some conversation about, uh, a desire to hold a second meeting with the consultant that was here back in late October in regards to strategic planning and growth and development, uh, here in Oxford. He has gotten back in touch with me with some dates. And I will send those dates out to you tomorrow, and you can make that decision in regards to when we may wish to do that. And related to that, as you recall, um, the first meeting that we had with that consultant kept circling back to the fact that his recommendation centered around Oxford's need for a comprehensive plan. And he dropped, I'll be quite frank with you. He is, he is correct. The strategic plan that the city, uh, has in place currently was nineteen ninety-nine? I can't remember. Two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine.
It is something that, you know, was done at the time when the City of Oxford was experiencing point zero six percent annual growth. And I don't think that, uh, anyone at that time envisioned, uh, having nearly three thousand residential units potentially being planned for the City of Oxford, doubling our housing stock. I bring this point to you, uh, to let you know that, um, I think that, uh, the time is now for us to begin considering strongly moving forward with the, um, development of a comprehensive plan for the City of Oxford to help us guide that growth and development. Essentially, the strategic or comprehensive plan is, um, your roadmap that you utilize to assist you in determining growth and development, densities, types, all those types of things based upon the factors that go into the development of a comprehensive plan. In order to do a comprehensive plan, um, you essentially have to have the funding to do it. At the time that, uh, budgeting was done this past year, uh, we did not take that into consideration. And honestly, we didn't take into consideration the fact that we were going to have the crush of development interest like we're having right now, quite frankly. And, uh, believe that, um, it would be appropriate for us to approach the board this evening, um, with the thought process of potentially moving forward with that comprehensive plan and, uh, the engagement of a consultant to assist us in doing that. We have taken the initiative, initiative, we being administration and the, uh, planning department to send out a request for qualifications, um, for consulting firms to assist us in development, uh, of a comprehensive plan for the City of Oxford. We've received seven back, um, and are in the process right now of going through those. Our next step in this would be if the board were to approve, uh, potentially some, some funding or at least have the understanding that that will be done in order to address this need, is to put forth a, uh, request for proposals based upon those requests for qualifications in the narrowing down process based upon experience and the work performed for other, um, governmental agencies. And I just wanted to put that out to you, because, um, the conversation that was had with Mr. Sari back in October largely centered around his emphasizing the fact that that's basically at every question asked and every presentation slide that he had centered on that. And he's not wrong. And he's not wrong, he is not wrong. It is time, uh, it's been, what is that, thirteen years now since that one was, um, done? And the times have changed for the City of Oxford and, uh, we really need to have that very important land development, uh, and strategic planning tool in place in order to do this. And, uh, it's, it's a significant investment, uh, in staff time and energy. Um, it's a process that can take six to eight months, uh, in order to do it because there is a lot of public engagement and public participation in that in, in order to get it done properly. So, I bring that to you tonight, Mayor, and the board can, uh, handle that or respond back in any way that they so wish. And that's basically what I've got for you this evening.
So, are you asking for, I mean, uh, some kind of general consensus that we want you to proceed with this and, uh, using your insight when you get closer to a sense of the cost to come back to the board? What, where, what would you like us to do with this information at this time?
Well, at this time, I, I just want you to be aware of it. If, if you are supportive of it, we will essentially go forward and get the understanding of exactly what we're looking at cost-wise. Um, generally speaking, the ones that I have seen performed, um, in these days and times, you're looking at, you know, forty to fifty thousand roughly. It's about what you're looking at in order to get that accomplished. Um, and have it done well, uh, comprehensively, to use the term, but, um, I just want the board to, to understand that, uh, to, to gauge the support for that or not. If you have no desire to do that at this time, um, then it will be helpful for staff to know that and, uh, that way we won't go further and, uh, we would start the process of, uh, working on a comprehensive plan through the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, but. So, you know, I, I wanted to come to you tonight because we're halfway through fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and, you know, it was not budgeted in twenty-one, twenty-two. And in order for expenditures, uh, to be expended, we need budgeted funds. So, uh, if, if I'm getting the sense that you do wish to go forward, then Mr. Hung and I would work with, um, the Planning Department in basically coming up with a figure to bring to you at next month's meeting.
Okay. What are, what are your thoughts, colleagues?
Well, I, I'd like to, uh, give Alan a call maybe tomorrow and Cheryl and get with you and talk about this and then I can report it back to the committee, my committee. And then we can put it before the whole board, I'm in full favor of it, but let's get some details down, some sort of agenda.
I think that would be a good idea, I can't recall, like, your chair of the committee, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, so I think we need to have that conversation between the three of us before I go to the committee.
At this point, are we, you know, is there a sense among you about going forward or?
With this research and investigation, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I don't, I don't see why we would want you to stop, but, you know.
Well, I, I will say this, and I mentioned it previously. Ten months ago, I don't, I don't think any of us envisioned having the crush of development interest that, you know, we have, we have seen. And we thought we were doing a good job in preparing for what we knew was inevitable coming from the Raleigh Durham Triangle area. We knew we were going to see some, some growth coming from that. And we were preparing in terms of, um, infrastructure improvements, DBO, staffing needs, looking at all of these things, and then boom, I mean, we now have as many as fourteen potential developments that will need to come to Oxford. Um, you've seen them, you're gonna have another one back before you again next month.
Right.
That has already come to us before and has been delayed a couple of times. We've approved three, there's another one coming next month, and there are multiple, multiple more, uh, potentially. And they're serious, they are serious. I mean, I'll watch the news and read the newspapers and, uh, there was, um, on WRAE L before I came back to work, a gentleman sitting there talking about, you know, five years ago how he had purchased his house in Lake County and, you know, the latest tax assessment court was more than double. And he was, you know, sitting there going, I don't know how the young people can afford to live here.
Yeah.
That's what's driving this.
Right.
And, you know, the Raleigh Durham Greater Triangle area is not slowing down in growth and jobs being created there almost on a daily basis. And those people that are coming to fill those jobs have to have somewhere to live. And when they can come here and get there, if you saw the news tonight on four forty where there was that accident shooting and, you know, the traffic backed up for three to four hours just to get across Raleigh, you could potentially do it in thirty minutes coming up to eighty-five.
Yeah.
And do it at a third of the price, you know why people are starting to look in our area. So, it is one of those things that, um, would assist the city in, in really making good land use decisions for the future. I mean, we talked about you're making decisions that, um, will be impactful to your children and grandchildren. And, um, that is one of the tools you need in place.
And we need it in place.
To help you in making those decisions.
Now.
Sooner rather than later, because, yep.
Well, we'll have that conversation and I have to get with, uh, Commissioner Lumpkins, Commissioner Bridges, who are on the committee. But I know their availability is pretty limited at times, isn't it, with the courts and things, so, I'll get with you.
One of them.
Okay. Good. So, that, but that's great news. And I want to, I want to thank the manager and Ms. Hart for jumping right on that and putting out the RFQ, um, because we, we really don't have any time to waste. It's, it's upon us and the sooner we get this process going, the better. So, um, I would thank you very much for all your work in that area and look forward to hearing about your meeting. Uh, so that's it for you, Mr. Thornton?
That's it.
And Mr. Burnett, anything from you?
No.
Okay, well, with that, uh, we are planning to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, paragraphs A five. The City of Oxford Board of Commissioners will adjourn into closed session to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of a public body in negotiating, one, the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. And with that, we have a motion.
Before making motion, can we have the heating system checked in here? Or is it just me?
No, it's not just you.
No, it is a little nippy.
No, it's cold.
We're, we're saving mine, aren't we?
Thank you. I'm making the motion.
Are you making the motion?
I'm, I'm making the motion, yeah.
You motion to go into closed session, any discussion?
Heating closed session.
All in favor signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. God bless you each and everyone, thank you for being here, thank you for your patience tonight. Stay warm and be safe on the road home.
I had meetings this week with the downtown Economic Development Corporation, which I'm appointed to the board. Um, we went through some, actually, last week.
In regards to the date of proposal.
There's a crossover, I think, in the city budget. So, we were discussing the downtown sort of developments and, uh, moving forward with some respective projects and stuff.